All right. Good evening and welcome. I call to order the September 13th, 2021, City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Okay, thank you. All right. Does anybody have any proposed changes to the order of the agenda this evening?
No changes from staff this evening, Madam Mayor, but I will remind you that Council Member Rack needs to recuse himself on Consent Calendar Item 8D.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. And before we get started, I do just want to acknowledge the 9/11 anniversary. So with that, before we get started this evening, I want to make a few comments about the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 terrorist attacks. And I want to acknowledge Tom Ricks, one of our neighbors, who recently shared some related thoughts with me. Of course, none of us will ever forget the images from that fateful morning. They are forever etched in our memories. Those who gave their lives represented who we are and are as a nation. Diverse, hardworking loved ones tending to their business routinely, yet extraordinarily. Then the first responders, councilors, and families who selflessly demonstrated the strength, courage, and resolve that has allowed us to heal, rebuild, and move forward. But never to forget, cowardice withers; love and empathy endure. So let's take a few quiet seconds to consider our good fortune and the people that we treasure, and recommit to the common good and the sustaining power of love. Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd only like to say I've known Mr. Ricks for over 50 years, and I want to thank him for his comments.
All right. So with that, we'll move to a report from closed session. Greg?
There is no report from closed session this evening.
Thank you. All right. And we have a presentation this evening to recognize Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month. We are joined by Connie Barrero, San Carlos resident and advocate for the Latinx community and president of the League of Women Voters for the North County. Crystal, is she with us? There she is. Okay, great. All right. So I will read the proclamation and then allow Ms. Barrero a few moments for comments. So designating September 15th to October 15th, 2021 is Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month, whereas Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans whose ancestry can be traced to over 20 countries in Latin America, including Mexico, Central, and South America, and the Caribbean. And whereas the observation began in 1968 is Hispanics Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and in 1988, as it was expanded to cover a 30-day period and enacted to federal law, calling upon all of the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. And whereas Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month is a time to honor the invaluable ways Hispanics and Latinxes have contributed to our common goals, and celebrated their diverse cultures, and worked towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous tomorrow for all. And whereas celebrating Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month is especially significant this year, to recognize the integral role of Hispanics and Latinxes in serving on the front lines of the fight against COVID-19. It is because of these contributions that their communities have been disproportionately impacted by this pandemic. And whereas the city of San Carlos is strengthened by the diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city of good living. Now therefore be proclaimed that I Laura Parmer Lohan, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby declare September 15th through October 15th, 2021, is Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month, and urge our community to join together to celebrate their contributions to our country, presented this 13th day of September, 2021. Thank you so much. Ms. Barrero, would you like to make any comment?
Yes, thank you so much. I would just like to say how proud I am to be here to receive this on behalf of our community, our Hispanic and Latinx community. And I really want to thank the mayor, Mayor Lohan, and everybody on council for this celebration and for this acknowledgement. We do have celebrations throughout the county kind of planned, so we're hoping that you can join some of them. You know, it is a wonderful opportunity to celebrate, you know, our history, our, you know, our contributions, but also celebrate with some of our family and some people and, you know, talk about our diverse culture and community as well. So thank you so much for doing this. I don't know if it's the first time it's been done, but I really appreciate it, and thank you for allowing me to be here.
All right. Thank you for joining us. Do any of my council colleagues wish to make a comment? All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So our next item is to receive a presentation from the Center for Age-Friendly Excellence Cafe on an Age-Friendly Community Initiative. Presenting the presentation this evening is Cynthia Nakayama, Associate Director of Center for Age-Friendly Excellence. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you so much, Mayor Parmer Lohan and City Council members of San Carlos. Cafe really appreciates the opportunity to be here tonight for your time in order to present on the Age-Friendly Initiative and let you know a little bit more about how we'll be working with your city. Oh, my.
Crystal, might you be able to advance the slides?
Thank you very much. So just to let you know a little bit about Center for Age-Friendly Excellence, or as we like to call it, Cafe, our mission is to advance vibrant, healthy, inclusive, and communities for all. We agree with the thought that the World Health Organization had, that there's so much value in the knowledge and experience that older people have, and this is such a growing population, that we really do need to tap this potential that the older people represent for humanity. And I think you would all agree with that, too. Next slide. Thank you. So, the Age-Friendly Network was founded in 2005, but just to give you a little bit of history about that, the World Health Organization realized in early 2000s that the older adult population was growing very quickly, and they decided to do a survey to find out what are the unmet needs of older adults around the world. And based on their work with 22 different countries, they came up with eight different domains where there are unmet needs that seem to be a common categories among all of these countries. And two of them, like housing and transportation, are highly, you know, I think you are very aware of those still being an unmet need, and this is kind of, it's such a major issue, and will take a while. But there are six others, and you may already be familiar. I'll go over those a little bit in a few more slides. So now there are 1,100, over 1,100 cities worldwide, and Burlingame, Half Moon Bay, and San Carlos are next, which is very exciting. Burlingame just submitted their application this week. So, yeah, you're coming up soon. Next slide, please. And with this greatly growing older population, and this will continue on, by 2050, we expect that at least 22% of the world's humans will be older persons living in cities. And the reason why this is significant is because this impacts the way the city does its planning and its strategies, because this needs to be included in how they create and develop their city. Next slide. So here are the eight domains of livability, and as you see, housing and transportation are here. The other six, I think you can read them yourself, so I won't go through it. But I think one of the main points about all eight of these categories is that they kind of overlap. So if you improve something about, or you have a project that improves, say, transportation, it in fact, in fact, also improves others, such as social participation or maybe health services, since, as you know, when we can no longer drive, or we no longer have the means to get somewhere, we can't participate in social activities, or we can't go to our health appointments. So we always keep that in mind. We like to look at it holistically, because there is such an overlap between all of these very important categories. Next slide, please. And so the city of San Carlos has already been working on some major projects, and is already age-friendly. I think our work with you is just to keep going and make it, you know, even more age-friendly than it already is. But a few things that I've received from your task force is the community center renovation. I guess there are some passive areas that are going to become converted into more active spaces, which will make it more fun for people who participate. There's also a pedestrian bicycle master plan, which is wonderful. I think during the pandemic, a lot of people started walking more and biking more, and maybe that's why this has come up. But I think that this will help our health, and also, a lot of older adults like to take walks, or may be able to get, you know, to their destinations by walking, and this will make it a lot easier. There's also improvements going on in Children Park, which is great. And also, it's wonderful, this annual affordable housing grant program that you have, and have been contributing to the rebuilding Together Peninsula Safe at Home program. What a valuable organization this is, helping older adults stay at home and age in place. So we fully recognize that this program that you have is so valuable. Next slide, please. To go through the age-friendly process model, we're very grateful that we're working with an excellent core leadership team in San Mateo County. This includes Ann O'Brien, who has been with the project for the entire time, and she's also an legislative aide with Supervisor David Canopus's office. He is the one who spearheaded this initiative in San Mateo County, and we are so grateful to him for all the support he has continued to provide to us. The core team also includes wonderful representation from community leaders such as Commission on Aging, San Mateo County Health, Aging and Adult Services, San Mateo Villages, and Peninsula Family Services. So this team assists us in thinking of who could possibly be on the task force membership as we start the process. And in this case, actually, San Carlos was very helpful. The task force itself that we had initially was very helpful in helping form more, a larger task force, and we are grateful for that, and are continuing to look for maybe some additional diversity and inclusivity, just because that's just a key element of this process. Then comes the community involvement and assessment, and that is some main part of what the work is all about, and that is the focus groups, which goes through, I guess, the questions of unmet needs as well as strengths of the city for older adults 55 and over. And so we're always, we're looking for participants for those different groups, in different age groups, as well as ethnicities and demographics. We combine the results of those focus groups with any existing quantitative data that already exists. And so this assessment process is really the heart of the work that's done, because it is used to develop the age-friendly project ideas to meet the needs that are unmet in the city. So once that is added to the application to AARP, the mayor signs the application, and it is submitted to AARP. Just a note on that, it used to go directly to the World Health Organization, but once the pandemic came along, then they got too busy and designated AARP. That is the U.S. affiliate of WHO, Age-Family Network. They are now our U.S. affiliate, so we are working more closely with them. Next slide. So this is a simple five-year commitment. The planning and submission of the AARP application is during year one, and that's when Cafe works with San Carlos. After that, AARP has, they have an additional requirement that WHO didn't have, and it's the action plan. So once the city is certified, they require that this action plan is created and submitted within two years after the certification. And I'll go, I'll show you a few of the details, because what came out of one of our core team meetings is that the cities need to know upfront that this action plan is required, because that's what happens after Cafe is already, you know, done working with you. Then the implementation of the projects that you choose, initially, and this is a five-year process, and then you evaluate where you are, and then the process starts over again. And so the cities, all of the cities that are already age-friendly are committed to this five-year ongoing cycle to improve their age-familiarness. Next slide, please. So these are some of the details, and I won't go through all of them, because there's probably more. You can take in just right this moment, but it is on the AARP website. They have a lot of resources. But just as some of the items, in addition to the executive summary, you know, how it's developed, as well as, just wanted to point out that the action plan is active and fluid rather than a static document. So since things always change, it is completely understandable that the action plan will be modified. You want target dates, of course, but also the measurement and tracking system that you use needs to be included. So this is a pretty formal process. You need to be able to show that you are making progress, and, you know, I think that this action plan itself is just really demonstrates the city's commitment to the age-friendly improvement of their city. Next slide, please. So, you are already pretty age-friendly, but you may not know that there are economic benefits that are associated with being age-friendly, because people always think that you want more working people living in a city. But there were two greater Kansas, greater Kansas studies done that showed that the economic benefits went up when one, either you kept the older adults in the area, or to attracted more older adults to your area. And that's because, a couple things, a couple reasons for that, is that they have more money that, you know, they don't need to spend on other things, and so they're able to help the economy by spending it on some of the things that maybe working people or busy families aren't able to. Also, they have the time to volunteer or contribute to the city more, and so this is very helpful. And a lot of people don't realize that it is economically beneficial to have more older adults. Also, social capital. So this, when you're an age-friendly community, this creates an environment that attracts more intergenerational activities, as well as those that empower older adults. So that's an improvement also. Then the infrastructure innovations, I think I talked about those already. The improvements to Children Park, it's becoming more bikeable and pedestrian-friendly, and because of your master plan, as well as the improvements to the community center. So you already have some things going on there. And then the healthy, healthy communities. This occurs because with being age-friendly, you start having more data that supports maybe actions that improve public health. So you have more to work with. We just always like to mention that, you know, every experience, the leadership, the vision, and courage that we've seen throughout the county has been exceptional, and you have all been really excellent partners. So we're thankful. Next slide, please. So at this point, we like to respectfully request support of the city. I think we do have your support, but specifically just to publicize the age-friendly efforts. Also, if you have any people in mind for the focus groups that are over 55, to include in different ethnicities, or cultures, or demographics, please let us know. Also, once Cafe completes the process, and the application is submitted and approved, then the city and the entire community's support and leadership is needed to move forward. So yes, I see Sarah McDonald has, yes, my mayor.
I'll wait for you to conclude your presentation. Go ahead.
Okay. So I guess if there's any public comment, this was added, which is good, great. Please use the raise hand feature so that somebody can acknowledge you. Next slide, please. So just to wrap up, an age-friendly city is an inclusive and accessible urban rural environment that promotes active aging and aging in place. Our mission is to advance transformational change, to create vibrant, sustainable, supportive, and inclusive communities for all generations, because age-friendly means friendly for all. So we thank you so much in helping us create community, and we are already enjoying working with you. So thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you so much for your presentation. We'll move to questions at this time. So Vice Mayor McDowell, and then Councilmember Rack, I saw your hand up, but it's now gone.
Okay, I'm fine now. Thank you.
Okay, okay. All right. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Madam Mayor, I just have a comment. Is it okay if I share a comment right now, or would you prefer that to be after the public speaks?
Why don't we do public comment, and then we'll go to discussion? So if there's no further questions, Crystal, or is anybody from the public wishing to make comment on this?
Yes, I do see one hand. Villages of San Mateo County. You should be able to unmute.
Hi. Do you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, this is Scott McMullen. I'm the president of Villages of San Mateo County and a resident of San Carlos. And first, I want to thank the City Council and the city staff for the amazing and dedicated work that they do, and for taking on this age-friendly initiative. I totally support it, as being in so involved in a nonprofit that serves older adults in our community, I can see that this is going to be another great step forward for San Carlos. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next up is Sonia Elks. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, thanks. That was a terrific presentation. I'm also thrilled, for the same reasons, to be an age, working towards an age-friendly city. And I work hard on trying to make sustainable active transportation, public transportation, bicycle, pedestrian-friendly. I try to support all of those initiatives, and one of our, you know, strongest points is an 8 to 80, 8 to 80 city, meaning that what's, you know, that it works for the eight-year-old, it works for the 80- eight-to-eighty city, meaning that what's, you know, that it works for the eight-year-old, it works for the eighty-year-old. And so I'm thrilled to be working in the same vein, towards the same purposes, to be a very age-friendly city, like an eight-eighty city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia, and it looks like our last speaker is Will. Could be able to unmute. Hello, Will?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, did you have a public comment?
I do, yes. So just, I have a few concerns. I know City Council is trying to like implement the no off-leash dogs on Burton Park, and I have a small dog, she's eighteen pounds, and we don't have a small dog park. I mean, taking care of the regular dog park, we either get her injured or killed, and that's something that I don't want, and there are many other people who share the same opinion with me. And yeah, so we need an alternative if, if no off-leash dogs are allowed in Burton Park. So there's no alternative for us people who have smaller dogs.
Thank you, Will. Jeff, if you could have a member of staff follow up with Will, and Will, if you could email Crystal Mui at City of San Carlos to provide her with your contact information, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
We'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And there are no more speakers.
All right, Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you so much for this presentation. I'm absolutely thrilled to hear the news that this is moving forward. Back in 2019, I actually advocated at the county level, including with Supervisor Canifa, requesting that San Carlos be included in this effort as soon as possible. And so I'm very glad that we have been finally chosen for this round. I've also attended some age-friendly celebrations where age-friendly cities have presented the projects that they have implemented. And what strikes me the most is that although these projects are designed to help our aging adults, they also are a great community asset that serve all ages. Things like public bathrooms downtown and benches and curb cuts to enhance mobility in town benefit everyone, whether you travel by baby stroller or by walker. So I fully support this, and I want to thank the mayor and our staff for working on this important designation for San Carlos. It's been something that's been close to my heart for a while now, so I'm, I'm just thrilled, and I, I thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Go to Councilmember Rack and then Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I just wanted to also offer my support. I appreciate the presentation. I had a chance to talk to Scott McMullin this weekend and hear his perspective on it. I just want to, thanks, it's a great initiative, I'm glad we're doing it. I thank the mayor and staff for, for taking the initiative to do this and look forward to, to working on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan and then Councilmember Collins.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor, and yes, thank you for the presentation, and I, I also wholeheartedly support the initiative. Seniors in our community are very special, and they do have certain needs. My father-in-law was a guest in our house for a couple of years, about a year ago. And, you know, when you, when you see the mobility issues and how to navigate through town, you realize, wow, there is a lot of things we still could do to make this a more welcoming city. And, and I will say that everything our adult community center does is terrific, so shout out there. But I definitely support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, guys like me love age-friendly cities. So I am, have been full supporter of this initiative, and I hope, unlike what my neighbor Sonia said about eight-to-eighty, I hope it's nine-to-ninety because I'm going to be eighty-pirty soon. I think I want to stick around longer than that. But anyway, thank you, Cynthia, it was a great presentation and look forward to supporting it.
Thank you. Yes, and I appreciate the presentation as well, and, you know, one of the things that struck me when I first moved to San Carlos was how age-friendly it already was, so I think this will, you know, take us to the next level. And as you could see, the duration of the program is over a span of five years. So I might suggest to our city manager that we formalize a subcommittee on this. Right now, it's myself and Councilmember Collins, but with the transition of our rotational mayor status and the fact that the mayor does play an important role, I might suggest we look to future discussion around creating a more formal subcommittee on this, if there's openness to that.
Yes.
Sounds great to me.
Sure, and I'd be happy to be part of it.
Okay, terrific, okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, so with that, we'll move to, and thank you so much, Cynthia Nakayama, for coming this evening and sharing with us your, your passion for this project, and we look forward to working with you on it thoroughly.
That's clear. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
All right, we'll talk to you soon.
Talk to you soon.
All right, so the next item is Council Communications and Announcements. Does anybody have anything to share this evening? Vice Mayor McDowell and then Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to recognize that September is National Suicide Prevention Month, and we're very fortunate to have some wonderful organizations here in San Carlos dedicated to supporting our mental health and well-being. One of them is Star Vista, and one of them is One Life Counseling Center. And I just wanted to share with the community that One Life Counseling Center has an event coming up on September twenty-sixth that is specifically for middle and high school students. It's called Connection Through Community and Suicide Prevention. It's going to be down at the San Carlos Youth Center with tacos and speakers. And so I'm hoping that our city can help share that message with our community. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just, I just want to, just quick reminder that tomorrow is the last day to vote on the upcoming election, so please go exercise your right.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack. And I would, I have two, two items to share, I don't see any other hands. So the first is, I, I just want to acknowledge and congratulate Vice Mayor McDowell. One Life Counseling Center, who she just referenced, had their annual gala on Saturday evening, and it was quite a thrill to see her receive the local government official recognition for her weekly service to that very important organization of ours. So congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren.
And the next item I want to share with all of you is, it is with, it's bittersweet for me to share with you that I would, on one hand, the sweet part is to congratulate Jacob, Jake Trickett, on his recent promotion to Lieutenant. Jake has been in, been the San Carlos Administrative Sergeant since August two thousand and eighteen in Walens San Carlos. Jake has been instrumental in the successful daily operations of the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff's Office within the city. He built and fostered relationships with members, members of the community, city council and city staff. We'd like to thank you, Lieutenant Trickett, for everything you've done for the city. We will miss you in this capacity and wish you good luck in your next assignment. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Very, very much appreciate those words. It's bittersweet, the promotion, obviously, moving on. San Carlos has had a special place for me, not only working here, but also living here the last ten years. I'm very much looking forward to my next chapter. However, I'll always remember this assignment and serving the community of San Carlos. I have no doubt that whoever comes into my office next will, will continue to serve, probably even better than what I could do. I'm excited to still be able to help and have connection to San Carlos in my next position, and I'll try to catch a few of you downtown every once in a while. So thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Collins has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to extend my congratulations to Jake and tell you that I've always enjoyed talking with you, working with you, love seeing you downtown. You've really been a great part of our community, and I, I hope you will come back and visit us often.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Rack and then Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also want to offer my congratulations to Jake, and it's been great working with you the last few years. It was a well-deserved promotion, you've been a great asset for the community, and I, I know that you are still, hopefully, you'll still live in town, so we'll, we'll still see you around and appreciate all your work and leadership on behalf of the community.
Thanks, sir.
Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jake, congratulations, this is really exciting for you. But as my colleague said, it is absolutely bittersweet and you will be deeply missed. I've always appreciated how approachable you are and just really helpful. So hopefully, we can continue to see you around town and maybe over at Devil's Canyon. Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, congratulations, Jake, well-deserved promotion, and I'm glad San Carlos isn't really losing you. You'll still be around, so that's terrific.
Thanks, sir.
All right, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
All right, with that, Crystal, we'll move to public comments. So persons wishing to address the city council and items not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the city council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The city council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future city council agenda for a more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make comments?
I am not seeing any hands raised.
All right, then why don't we move to the consent calendar? I understand Adam will need to recuse himself from item D. Are there any other items that anyone would like to pull from the consent calendar before we take that particular item? Okay, seeing none, so Councilmember Rack, I understand you need to recuse yourself, and if the Crystal could call you back in to virtual chambers, once we're completed with that item, we'll take the rest of the consent calendar.
Sounds good.
All right. And be willing to entertain a motion for item D.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Item D.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Greg, do we need to read out the actual item as described? If it's pulled out separately?
No, it's, it's, since it's just a reso, we don't have the, we don't have to read it.
All right, thank you. All right, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack is recused, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Carmelo Ham.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and text him.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I will move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through C and E through K.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, Crystal, is there any member of the public who wishes to make comment?
I am not seeing any hands, so no.
All right, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Mayor Carmelo Ham?
Yes. Okay, so that moves us to item nine A, the discussion around new business of Eucalyptus Avenue Holiday Celebrations. Tara Peterson, I understand, our Assistant City Manager, will be giving the presentation. And as this is a new business item, we will be taking a report from staff, then questions from council, then public comments, and then any further comment and discussion from council.
Good evening, council. Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, council. This is Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. I will be making this presentation this evening, but I am backed up by a number of department heads who will support me in answering the questions that I may not be able to answer from you. So this topic, the outreach, as well as staffer recommendations, is the result of a council request, so, Crystal, if you'll move it to the next slide, please. So a little bit of background. These community events have been occurring for a number of years. Can't say how long, I know it's been quite a long time. They've become kind of a foundation in the community, something everyone has grown to love and care for over the years. However, over the last few years, the events have grown, and the impacts on the community as well have been wide, widely felt. This last year, due to the pandemic, it was a particularly challenging year. Just a lot of traffic and a lot of issues that the community felt that was a problem. So both the council as well as staff were contacted by community members, saying, is there something that the city can do to help us? So the council dated requests for staff to reach out to the community. And, but before we did that, the council asked us to come to it with information about what the history was, what the issues have been, and what the, the city has done in the past to try to resolve those issues. And so in April, we came to council and explained all of those things, and that's when council said, well, go ahead and do some outreach, please. And we'd like you to do a number of things. First, engage the entire community. So we sent a postcard to everyone in the community, inviting them to participate either by going to our webpage to learn more about what was happening and to provide input if they so chose to. We also launched a Shape San Carlos survey, and we held two community meetings. I'll talk a little bit more about the details of these. The Shape San Carlos survey ran for about a month. There were about four hundred and seventy-five individuals who engaged in the, the survey. A hundred and six registered members of the community participated in the survey. When we, when we say registered, it means that they've logged in an address, so we can ensure that they are a San Carlos resident, not just somebody from outside of the community. And we did, in the packet is a report which includes the results from that survey. But essentially, we asked two questions about what do they like and appreciate about the holiday events? And we did hear quite a bit about the holiday spirit, and it's a good family activity. It's beautiful to look at, and there's a real sense of community from having these events. And then we asked, what, what were the concerns that the community had about these events? No, I didn't move forward yet, Crystal, sorry. I'll, I'll tell you when. We asked them, what, what were you concerned about? And about two-thirds of those who participated in the SHAPE survey said, it's really about crowd size. It's really grown, and we're concerned about that. And then traffic safety and trash, a little over half of the comments received dealt with those. If you're interested in looking at the full survey, you can do so at Shape San Carlos, and if you need a link to that, just let us know, we'll send you that information just to make it a little bit easier for you to find. You can now go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So the community meetings, we also heard a lot from the community. We held two of these virtual meetings. One was on May twenty-sixth and one was on June eighth. They were facilitated by Sean Spano. And we began the meetings by presenting just staff's perception of the history and what we've seen happening in the past, what we've been asked to do, and what continues to concern us. And then we broke into groups with the community members so that we could really hear from them and gather their input. So each group had a facilitator to ask the same questions, so each, each of the groups was consistent with what we were asking them to provide us information about. We also had a note taker to make sure we captured everything that these community members had to say. This slide here shows some of the input that we received. There's a couple of things I want to point out. The, the bubbles with the larger texts were what we heard most often. Those with the smaller texts, we heard less often. We have this organized, the blue. We have this organized, the blue bubbles are all what they feel about the event. The red are what the concerns they have about these events, and the green are some of the suggestions. So I'd just like to briefly read these. So a lot of people feel that the experience has changed in recent years, and most notably in 2020. They do feel it's a great family and holiday tradition. They want it to continue, but they feel that it's gotten out of control. The concerns are there's a lot of traffic and it's become overwhelming. There's concern about emergency access if needed to get onto, onto the blocks of Eucalyptus where these events are taking place, just in case there's the need for any kind of medical or other services. And there's some concern that the crowds are a bit out of control. And finally, some of the residents feel trapped in their driveways that can't get in or out due to the traffic that happens during these events. So the community had provided a lot of input and just wanted to highlight some of those we heard most often. They do want more sheriffs presence. They like trash cans and restrooms provided. They'd like us to help encourage the residents to consider reducing the hours or the length of the time that they have these events. They would like us to institute one-way traffic and traffic control. The one-way traffic would be during the December events, and traffic control would be for both the Halloween as well as the December events. And then finally, limit advertising of any sort. The city doesn't do advertising at the event, but there's a lot that's out there. There is a Facebook page, the community talks about it. The events are on the list of 10 best things to do during the holidays, so it has become popular region-wide. And that's why we think that there was just a lot of, a lot more traffic that occurred in 2020. We think that there just wasn't a lot going on during the pandemic, so community members from throughout the Bay Area came to San Carlos to see these beautiful lights. They heard great things and they wanted to experience it for themselves. We can also acknowledge that the city sent to the community a postcard in advance of the events to let them know that we were aware that people probably would, that we knew they were going to still decorate their homes and that people would probably want to visit the neighborhoods. So we just wanted to let them know that due to the, the pandemic, the shelter-in-place orders, the social distancing, the fact that there were no vaccines, vaccines available at that time, that it would be best if people stayed in their cars and didn't congregate on the sidewalks. Next slide, please. So just a summary of this community feedback that we received was, they do want the celebrations to continue, but the growing footprint has become a real concern. Crowd size has just grown too large, traffic is becoming a problem, it's unsafe for pedestrians. There's no emergency access, as I mentioned before, parking is just non-existent. And then litter and sanitation have become an issue. Next slide, please. So the community proposed a number of solutions. We've highlighted what we heard most often here. Again, all of the suggestions are in your packet and in the report. But they really wanted to see some increased traffic enforcement and additional presence of law enforcement, the trash bins as well as collection so that it doesn't accumulate, portable restrooms, and a limitation on the days and hours of holiday lights. And then the possibility of restricting the access to just community members. Next slide, please. So what the staff did after we received all of this information from the community, we, we spoke together and determined what we thought, you know, of what really bubbled up from the community and what we thought we can do. We have these recommendations to council this evening for your consideration. One of the items that I didn't mention yet would be permitting. The interesting thing was when we asked about permitting, the community was rather split. Some thought, yeah, we should ask those that are on Eucalyptus, get a permit for these events. And others said, no, it's really just decorations, why should there be a permit needed? So staff thought about that, and we think that a permit really should be required for the one-day Halloween celebration. There is one home that throws what we'd call entertainment or an exhibition. And so we really like to work with this property owner to, to ask that he pull a permit and, or we would like to require that he pull a permit so that we can kind of work together on what we can do to make this as safe as possible for the community. We're not recommending that permits be pulled for the December celebration, as again, it is just displays. Generally speaking, there aren't events, sure, there are times that there might be a band from a school coming and playing or just more activity on the street, but it's not any kind of organized event. So we would not recommend having those neighbors pull a permit at this time. Another item we would like to do is ask the, the, those residents of Eucalyptus to work with us on maybe reducing the hours and days that they hold or they light up their street. So what we're going to do after we hear from council this evening is write a letter to the Eucalyptus residents to let them know what council has directed. And in there, we will be asking them to voluntarily reduce the hours. So among that would be asking them to reduce or to turn off the lights at nine o'clock. We have patrol and sheriffs and security planned for the hours from five to nine. So it'd be ideal if they'd shut off the lights at nine so that everybody kind of goes home at the same time. Another item that we could ask them to do would be to reduce the duration. Maybe rather than starting this event at Thanksgiving, they start a couple of weeks before Christmas. Another thing we could ask is that they only have lights on during the weekends rather than all week long. This is all just in order to reduce the impact on all of the neighbors surrounding Eucalyptus Avenue. Next slide, please. So we have some traffic control recommendations because again, we know that this is very important to the community is trying to deal with the traffic. So we propose closing Eucalyptus on Halloween night only, and then continuing the one-way traffic system that we've had in the past years for the December celebrations. We plan to have a much more robust traffic control system set up for both events. And this is going to include traffic barricades, signage, lights, message boards, or motorcycle deputies, two community service officers, and eight additional private security guards who would walk the street. They will not do any kind of law enforcement. They will just be a conduit between the people and law enforcement if they're needed. But they're really just there to help out, you know, hey, can you pick up that trash? Maybe there's a bin right over there, that kind of thing. The total cost per year for these two items or these three items, it would be sheriffs, personnel, security guards, as well as the traffic control, is 99,000. Next slide, please. So then sanitation service recommendations. We are recommending portable restroom facilities be installed adjacent to where the Halloween entertainment is held, as well as on the weekends leading up to the end of, to the end of, they always stop at Christmas, so not really to the end of December, but when they stop having the light displays. So the weekends as well as the three days before Christmas. And then we did include additional trash bins and collection services. And the total cost, which includes rental, delivery, removal, and regular servicing, is $11,500 a year. Next slide, please. So with that, we have a resolution put together, asking council to appropriate 110,000 and change for the next two years for these particular services, if those are the services the council feels that we should implement for this coming year. And with that, next slide, please. Thank you, and we're here to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you, Tara. Any questions from council? We'll go Adam, Councilmember Rack, Councilmember Dugan, and then Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I sometimes feel like everyone waits for me to go first. I'm always like waiting a second and then nobody jumps in, so I will thank you for the opportunity. Tara, thank you for the presentation and for all the outreach that, you know, the staff has done to the community and all the community participation. I think the more data we have, the more information we get, the better we can, we can do around this issue. And certainly, this is a great event for our community, and it's, you know, clearly growing and well-loved by people in, in San Carlos and around. I'm wondering, did, I saw that one of the key sort of areas of concern was sort of the traffic parking issue, and it, you know, was there any consideration of, of looking at sort of how we try to address, add, you know, parking, wayfinding to things, reaching out to maybe St. Charles or, or the school district about using those parking lots to try to encourage more pedestrians, getting people sort of some wayfinding and say, hey, you can go park here and walk. It seems like we sort of missed the boat on, or we didn't sort of tackle that area. Can you comment on that at all? Because I saw a comment from people.
Sure, that's a good question. We did talk about that amongst staff. And what we felt was if we were to create a secondary location for people to park, it would necessitate, you know, the facilities that we're offering at, on Eucalyptus. For example, we'd probably need to have restrooms there, we would need to have trash bins, that kind of thing. We, we did not reach out because we thought that that might not be the way to go on year one. So we did not speak to the school district or to St. Charles. We, we would be concerned that we would just be creating more traffic in other neighborhoods as people go to park there, and we would just need to be sensitive of that. Stephen, is there something you'd like to add to this question?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilwoman, Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. Tara, I think you really covered it. I think, you know, the really challenge is, is, you know, finding kind of a large area that we actually could park a number of cars. And then at being able or having the occupants actually find their way to Eucalyptus Avenue. It's, you know, as was stated, I mean, certainly this is a well-loved event within our community. However, it has gotten a lot of, kind of notice from people from the outside who may not really know our, our community and, and, you know, it certainly would be a challenge to kind of identify other large areas that could be used for parking and then kind of, you know, actually identify routes that they could use to get to, you know, Eucalyptus Avenue area.
Does that answer your question, I, I hope?
It, it, it does, I appreciate that. I'm not, I'll wait for a discussion because I'm not certain necessarily agree with that, particularly the central is a block, block and a half, it's where the cars are going anyway. I, I think that we should be thinking more holistic than the solution, but I appreciate the response on that. The other question I had was, I, I noticed that the sort of setup for law enforcement and everything else is sort of a fixed amount in, in reading through the packet and sort of experiences sort of the, the event obviously builds over time as it gets closer to, to Christmas and, you know, with the holiday lights and, and that. Is there, is the plan flexible? Because I'm not sure we need sort of as much police presence, let's say, on December 1st as we might on December 22nd. So I'm curious, because I, I've sort of got the request for the funding, but I haven't seen sort of a, a plan for what, what traffic control looks like. How are we going to manage that? It's sort of, I feel like we're being asked to sort of throw a bunch of money at the problem without kind of understanding what the plan looks like. So can you touch on that?
Yeah, sure. I think maybe both Stephen and Chief Bell might be able to answer this better because she knows how she would organize her staff. But I will just say this, yes, it could be flexible. Chief, would you like to add more?
Sure, I'd love to, thank you. So what we did is we looked at last year's statistics and the calls and complaints. And really what we saw were the weekend evenings from about 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So the estimate includes December 10th, 11th, and 12th, December 17th, 18th, 19th, and then December 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. And that would be for, that's where you would see the four motorcycle deputies, the two CSOs, because that, that's where really the high traffic is. Yes, it's flexible. If we are there on the 10th and it's not bad, then I can pull my resources and redeploy the next day. So we are flexible with that. That's how we came up with this plan is that we looked at the data. Thank you.
Thank you. Another thing, just, oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to?
Yeah, I, I would like to little bit comment on the traffic control. I guess it'd be my recommendation that we set up kind of the one-way traffic control right from the start. Essentially, it's to really kind of set the tone and set the direction of the event. Basically, what we don't want is, you know, is, is to have conflicts. And obviously, if we set it as one way, it's very clearly clear to the people perhaps who might visit the event, maybe once, twice, three times, that there is a certain direction that they need to follow, and it's kind of one way. And so as compared to maybe setting, not setting it up for perhaps three days and then setting it up one way on four days, it's a little bit confusing, so, you know, it'd be my recommendation to set it up, you know, right from the day one.
Okay, and then, Mike, oh, sorry, Tara, go ahead.
Yeah, the only last thing I wanted to mention is that the, the idea of the security guards is completely flexible. That's not something we need to have if council chooses just to go with our, our sheriff's office staff.
Then super fast, I just, when we talk about sort of the trash cans and porta-potties, what are we, can you just tell me where you're planning on placing them or where the recommended location is for those?
So they would be scattered, the trash receptacles would be scattered, so they wouldn't be the kind of dumpsters that perhaps, you know, had been requested. You know, one of the concerns that we have by putting the dumpsters besides being unsightly, they did, they do tend to gather other garbage. People start throwing tires and rugs and everything else. So they're going to be really the kind of the smaller, you might have seen them. There's kind of smaller square, maybe cardboard cell that have liners. And, and they would be scattered throughout the two blocks of Eucalyptus Avenue. And that will allow enough flexibility that, you know, people don't have to walk to the end of a block to throw it in the dumpster, but basically it's close by. But that being said, is because we want to have, you know, probably half a dozen on each block, maybe more than that. It will require a certain amount of servicing, you know, the following morning.
Okay, thank you. And then on the porta-potties, are you?
So the porta-potties, what we were looking at is probably because it's an event and is something that we need to be aware of, that we would have probably a single porta-potty that's on a gender-neutral, and then one ADA accessible porta-potty that's available, you know, for everyone.
Okay, thank you. And I, again, thank you for all the work on this, and I'm, I'm glad we're having this, this discussion tonight, and that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dugan, then Vice Mayor McDowell, and Councilmember Collins.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Tara, for the presentation, all the work, especially with the public outreach. It's, you know, it's a terrific community event, well-loved by our community. And, but I thought the feedback you gained was, you know, seemed right in line. So it gives us something, you know, to really bite into and work on to, to, to try to preserve this, you know, because we, we've got to make this work for the whole community. So I, I was intrigued by the notions of asking the neighborhood to apply some limits perhaps in, in the dates or the timing of the lights each day. Not sure how far you've explored that, so really my question is, I think when we last discussed this, there was a, it wasn't necessarily clear that there was a leadership from the neighborhood, like a focused group that you could talk to or work on, something like that. Has that since emerged? Do we kind of have a, a collection of, you know, critical mass of the neighbors that, you know, that, that we can work with directly on, on items like that?
Yeah, I would say no. Stephen, if you want to answer that, since you've had meetings directly with the neighborhood?
So, I mean, there, there might be a group of people who are kind of, you know, well common. However, there really isn't a, to my, to my understanding, a leadership group that will take the challenge of. leadership group that will take the challenge of kind of organizing.
Yeah, what we had heard from these residents who did participate, we didn't have many of them, but some did. They really do feel like they're just displays, and they're not an event, and they, they don't organize. They just decorate for the holidays. And this just has happened as a result of people wanting to see the displays.
Got it. And, you know, so I, I like those ideas about potential, you know, kind of voluntary limitations, but it doesn't sound like that'd be very effective if there isn't a kind of a leadership or, you know, people willing to engage directly. So, you know, that's unfortunate. That is unfortunate. My next question is about just the security. So I, I'm very much appreciate Councilmember Rack's thoughts on can, can this be flexible? And I'm glad to hear that on the sheriff's side, it can be, and I believe, Tara, you said, on, on the deputy's side, or on the security guard's side, it can be. And I guess I just want to probe that a bit, because in the past, we haven't really had anything like this. And it did, you know, it strikes me that going from like really no presence to what, 14 folks on the ground, you know, that, that seems like a big shift. So I definitely would be very interested in keeping that flexible and easing into it. But I, I'll just ask, how did we come to eight security guards, you know, four deputies and two CSOs is kind of the recommendation? Was that driven on something specific?
I will let the sheriff chief tell us.
So what we did is we looked at the footprint of the area, and based on the intersections that Eucalyptus intersects with, that if we had teams of two for security guards to be on foot, and then with respect to our motors, they're more flexible moving throughout the streets. And they usually run in pairs. And then the idea with the CSOs was to work with the parking complaints and the illegal parking, that they could be on foot issuing the citations for the illegal parking. And that's just, that's how we came up with that, just based on our staffing and other, other things to consider in the town during that time.
Got it. Thank you, Chief. And with the security guards, would they be, you know, working, you know, for your organization directly? Or would that be a, a public works contract? Or how, how do we think about that?
So it'd be a contract with the city, and we would work cohesively and, you know, as all usual, security guards is observe and report. So if they see something, they, they would know to call us. We would establish that relationship in that phone number or that liaison to get us there faster.
Okay. Does the Sheriff's Department do that regularly? I, I can't really recall examples of private security guards collaborating directly with deputies. Is that, is that done frequently?
It is with the Sheriff's Office, because we have so many county buildings that we are responsible for. So, for example, the Hall of Justice, when you walk through, you'll see the security guards, and we have a deputy posted there, same as the hospital, same as Northern Court, Juvenile Hall, et cetera.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. These are all really great, great questions and things that I had on my list, too. Following John's kind of line of thinking, Chief Bell, we did actually have significant amount of resources last year and probably years before posted out near Eucalyptus. It wasn't that we had no one, correct? You had, you had motors out there last year?
Yes, we did deploy after we received a lot of complaints. We did deploy motors on the weekends, just to get it's hard when you have a significant amount of vehicles coming to one location at one time, where we're just not used to that. So that, that is the challenge, is that everyone wants to come at the same time to a small place. But we did deploy, yes. And then in the way past, when in the Greg Roffas days, there were way more resources, I believe, 2010, maybe even 2009. But that was way before my time.
Right, right. No, thank you. And I think it's important to beef out security because, or our presence, because that pulls our deputies away from other emergencies. So it's important that we, we have enough capacity to man everything. My next question has to do with the spillover effects of this community celebration on Eucalyptus and the fact that in December, more than ever, we heard from residents from several streets away were very impacted by the backup of traffic and the parking misbehavior. So I'm wondering, with these resources, does that give you flexibility and resources to kind of address the spillover effects into the rest of the greater neighborhoods that are affected?
Yes, it does, because before, if we didn't have the extra staff here, then I would have to pull a shift deputy. And if they weren't available, then that problem wouldn't have been addressed, maybe like minutes later, you know, 30 minutes, et cetera. But having the staff available within proximity and striking distance, then we can deploy them faster and to resolve the problem faster.
If I could ask- Go, go ahead.
I just had one follow-up question, Tara. So the resources that we would be deploying, the deputies are not just on Eucalyptus Street. They would be circulating throughout that entire area?
Yes. So the, the four motors that would be dedicated for this specific event for those days would be in the greater area of Eucalyptus and not just on Eucalyptus and Orange or Britton. They would go down to El Camino. They, they would be flexible in that and just kind of look at all the traffic of what's coming on, because as we know, they're not just on Britton, they're also on Arroyo, they're also on Hemlock, they're also on all those other streets in Corlent.
Go ahead, Tara. Sorry.
I, I'm so sorry. I was going to just ask Christina if she would expand upon her, her feeling about working with security guards. We had talked about this, she and I, and I just want her to share her perspective of working with security guards at this location.
So with security guards, you know, obviously, they're just, they're going to be walking about and holding people accountable, but they have no powers to, you know, enforce anything. But at the same time, it still is a presence. It still is a reminder for people to see a badge, even though it's not ours, that, hey, we, we need to behave. And that's really what we're, we're going for. We're just hoping that everyone that visits this community is, you know, is behaving, right, and is doing what they're supposed to, and being respectful of the residents in the community that they're in. Was that it, Tara? Or is there something else?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Looks like Vice Mayor, you have no further questions, so I'll move to Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to, I want to thank staff. I think it was a great outreach to the community. I realize that there are a few that said that all of their concerns weren't answered, but it was a large effort. And so I, I appreciate everybody reaching out like that. Really, just a couple of questions. One for Stephen. When you talked about the one-way traffic control, can you describe to me what that looks like? Which way is the one-way and what street is the one-way on?
So the one-way essentially would start on Orange and go westerly towards Tamarack. So we would actually, you know, what we envision is actually having the traffic control or barricades kind of set up and, and pointing directly in that direction. So basically, it would allow the traffic to move from Orange to, onto Eucalyptus and go westerly, if you will. And so we would not allow, you know, any traffic from Tamarack going easterly on, on Eucalyptus Avenue. As I, as I mentioned earlier, basically, we want to kind of keep the flow in one direction such that you, you're not going to be experiencing conflict from, you know, either vehicle or pedestrians coming in the opposite direction.
So the people who live on Orange north of Eucalyptus, they, they'd still be able to come and go as they wanted?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. The, the only other question I had was, do we have a sense of how the residents on Eucalyptus feel about the proposed changes? You know, the, the turning the lights out sooner, changing the days, that, that sort of thing. Do we have any feedback from them as to, you know, their, you know, how they're reacting to it?
No, this is going to be, this is a proposal that we've made to council, and this will be, if we do send them a letter, this will be the first that they've heard about it. We are looking forward to having a dialogue with them. We hope that that's what we will be inviting them to, to, to do with us, is talk to us if they need us to help facilitate meetings and provide meeting space. We'll, we'll do anything that they need to, to facilitate this kind of cooperation amongst all their neighbors?
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's, that's really helpful. That's, that's all the questions I have, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. I think, I think you all left me one. So it's all, but good, good discussion so far. So I actually have two, two questions. So the first is around the permitting. I heard it suggested that the primary difference between the Christmas lights, the holiday lights and Halloween is that the Halloween event is more of a theatrical production. And then that, that would be something that would be permitted, could, that we could require being permitted. So what, what would that trigger? So if the, if the property owner pulled a permit for that, what, what would be the outcome of that in terms of, you know, city involvement?
Greg, would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. The, what we envision with the permitting process is we could, the city can put reasonable conditions on, on the permit. In addition, when someone pulls a permit for a special event, they automatically get some insurance that the city has arranged to obtain. So there'd be some liability protection for, for the person who pulls the permit to, to address some of the risks that come out of an event like that. And, you know, some of the conditions might be somewhat similar, but less, in less duration, you know, the, some, some conditions might be traffic control. It might be some trashcans and sanitary facilities. It could be at that level. It could be something less than that. I think that would be an assessment based upon the permit application, what they're proposing to do, how many people they expect to be there. And, and I, and I'm cognizant of being, you know, resident in San Carlos, it's not all about Eucalyptus on Halloween, although that seems to be the center of it. It's, it seems like a lot of people love to, to bring their children down there to trick or treat because of the concentration of homes and the, you know, the fact that that celebration is going on there. But people consider it a, a safe place to trick or treat, so they come from other areas to, to trick or treat down there. So that, that might be part of what we need to address, but, you know, we have to tie the permit to the, to the impacts of, or the conditions to the impacts from, from the person who's applying, because they'll tell us what they're going to do, and then we could address impacts from what they're doing.
Thank you. That's helpful. And then, just building on Councilmember Collins's remark around, you know, the fact that, so, you know, we got lots of input, so lots of engagement on this particular project, and appreciate staff reaching out in a, you know, very innovative ways to, to get that input. And, you know, the report in terms of the background and ideas suggested was quite broad. And I, I did hear from some community members, as it sounds like Councilmember Collins did, that felt like some of their ideas weren't reflected in staff recommendations. So, so could you, and I don't know who would be the appropriate person to answer this question, but what I'm looking for would be an understanding of kind of what inspired, you know, the scope and categories of recommended actions on behalf of the city. And why were those areas the areas of focus and some of the other suggestions not?
Yeah, I can start, and then it looks like Jeff wants to answer, but we did look at the common themes that you will see in that report as well. And most often, the common themes were what we have actually proposed. There were a lot of ideas. But we just felt that going with the common ones and, and addressing ones that we really felt that we could do and be somewhat successful with was really why we selected the ones we did. Jeff, if you'd like to add something?
Yeah, there were, there were quite a few, and they, they ranged from things like, can the city reimburse us for candy and the cost of decorations and even help with electricity bills, to can we only allow residents to drive into the area? So they were there and, you know, and a lot of stuff in between. And we tried to take the approach with some of them is, you know, what's appropriate with taxpayer resources and take a look at, at that with other things we do in the community. And felt that, you know, some of those things, while certainly understandable as individual requests, probably didn't fit really well within the scope of public expenditure. The main category that, and where we really spent a lot of time had to do with traffic and circulation. And, you know, just what, what many of those requests mean in reality would be that we'd actually create more traffic. And so we looked at things through that lens while, you know, in a, in a perfect world, you, you could just do those things. But in the reality of, you know, car A, car B, not having any idea who's in car A and car B, that would require, you know, individual contact with every vehicle, slowing down traffic, making it impossible. There's so many access points into the area from just about really every direction of the compass you can get there, depending on where you're coming from. And so there's just not, it, it just becomes overwhelming in terms of you, you can't, just can't control that many accesses, you know, unlike, you know, a, a concert venue or a stadium venue where you have large crowds that are, you know, designed to deal with that and large staging areas. The issue that we run into time and time again, as we look at different options for dealing with traffic, really ended up being not unlike what we deal with on Holly Street, where you just don't have a, a lot, long distances between intersections. And so the vehicles, you know, once they back up to that point and you start to experience problems at that intersection, that's where you really start to create the gridlock and the difficulty in going through there. And anything that we could, we could do, you know, I think the suggestions came from a really good place, but the reality was if implemented, they would ultimately result in even slower travel times through the area as we, as we create additional constraints on how traffic moves. And the one-way street on Eucalyptus is a concession to that. It's not done for traffic circulation, it's done for traffic safety. So that you don't have vehicles going in opposite directions, you know, looking at the pretty lights and being distracted. That's, you know, and, and even more variables to result in fender benders or vehicle pedestrian interactions of a negative nature. And so we go one way to, to create that flow to make it safer, but actually, you know, it, it slows traffic down a little bit in that you don't, you only have one lane instead of two in opposite directions. So that's sort of the one concession, but many of the other suggestions we got would, would add to that dynamic by limiting turning movements or checking folks into the area. It would, it would be very time-consuming, and it's their public roads, you know, anybody is allowed to drive on them. And we're hopeful that we don't see the kind of crowds that we saw last year, as Tara mentioned, because of COVID. You know, they're kind of a, you had sort of a double whammy with COVID last year. You didn't have a lot of opportunities. You know, many events were canceled all over the Bay Area, so there just weren't a lot of options during the holidays for people to go. And also, our regional roadways were very clear of traffic. So all of a sudden, you could get from the East Bay and the South Bay and the North Bay to San Carlos during those evening hours much quicker than typically you could have. So, you know, driving from further away was a more viable option for folks who also at the same time had less options to go do things as a family together. So we're hoping that we see the crowd sizes come down a little bit this year with, with more things happening, and also the natural constraints of traffic around us regionally, making it less desirable to drive long distances to come to our city.
Thank you. All right. Why don't we, thank you for that. Why don't we move to the public comment section? We currently have one hand up. Two hands up. Okay. First up is Kathleen Goforth. Should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, this is Kathleen Goforth. I'm a resident of San Carlos. I live very close to Eucalyptus Avenue, and I am one of the residents who has been trapped in my home for the last few Decembers. very close to Eucalyptus Avenue, and I am one of the residents who has been trapped in my home for the last few Decembers during this event. And I I want to make one one point really clear. I heard several times statements that, well, it's not really an event. It's just people putting up lights. It is an event. This is not just people putting up lights. This is a coordination of putting up lights. They bring in a crane or a lift or whatever you call it. They're all putting up things together on the same day. They oftentimes bring in snow. They have music playing. They are playing, you know, displaying, presenting movies on the street. That's an event that people in my street put up lights. We don't have these kinds of entertainment things going on. So it is an event. I was very pleased. Thank you, Councilmember Rack, for pointing out that the proposal really does kind of miss the boat on the parking issue. That's been one of the biggest concerns for us. We can't go do errands in the afternoon in December. Because if, you know, heaven forbid, I leave, I come back, there is no place to park. We cannot have friends and family come visit because there is no place to park. They can't, you know, if somebody wants to come visit me, they can't go park in the St. Charles School parking lot or the Central School parking lot. But if the city could designate that space or some space like that for people who are coming in to visit the lights, that could take some pressure off and allow the neighbors in the neighborhood to live their lives and enjoy their holiday, you know, have their own holiday festivities. So I was very disappointed to hear that the staff had not even looked into that option because I attended the community events and I heard that option raised multiple times by multiple people. And I really do think that it is something that should be considered and that would be a very practical response to relieve some pressure.
Thank you, Kathleen.
It bars out. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is Donna Cumming. You should be able to unmute.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I I live on on Eucalyptus. And I'm agreeing with what Kathleen just said and Councilmember member Rack said. I think it would be helpful if if it was Central Middle School that there was another option for people parking. You talked about an electronic sign. So I was curious where that would be and what it would be. Would it be directing traffic up a certain street in a certain direction? Another question had to do with vendors on the street during the Christmas holiday. And what how would that be addressed? And I think finally, you talk about having a permit and one particular person asking that. If that doesn't happen, if that person doesn't say they'll take the permit out, then how would you proceed with that? So I think those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next up is Sonia Elks. You should be able to unmute.
It's a pleasure to have such an exciting event in our town, but also sometimes a burden from traffic perspective. I just appreciate the one way street. And would just like to suggest that perhaps Eucalyptus can be one way in one direction and Birch can be the one way in the other direction. And that can just be a permanent change. And then during the holidays, it actually is closed. The both of those streets would be closed to through traffic that's not local, that's not in that doesn't live on those streets completely. And then reroute all the people parking to Central or St. Charles with signage so that there's not this backlog of people looking at lights from their cars. But rather you you essentially with by making it local, you know, on street traffic only that it's really. What am I trying to say? Yes. So basically, you have you don't have the long line of cars backing up because people are driving so slowly by looking at lights. You you really only have people going through the area, parking somewhere, and then they have to walk if they want to look at the lights unless they live on those streets. Or unless they are visiting someone on that street, that would also be local traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. And there are no further hands. Okay, thank you, Crystal. Jeff, I'm just wondering, and Greg, could we is it possible for us to address some of the public question and comments that were raised?
Yeah, I mean, I think I took down a couple that I think might be in my area about the the street vendors and the what happens if someone does not pull a permit? So the the city's staff's recommendation is that we require for Halloween that there be a permit pulled by someone in the neighborhood who comes forward to do that or is the primary person who's having the type of entertainment or for the displays for Halloween that that require a permit under our ordinance. So if someone doesn't pull a permit, they can be cited. And it would be a misdemeanor violation of the municipal code for failing to have a permit for a special event. That's the that's the the remedy that we could potentially employ when someone doesn't pull a permit. The other remedy is if we have nobody pulling a permit and we have evidence that that a celebration requiring a permit is going forward, I mean, there is an ability for me to request the council to authorize me to to pursue a civil action. That's very extraordinary in St. Carlos that that would happen. We usually, I mean, these types of things, like when we have solicitors come into town, we we cite them for failing to have a permit. That's generally how we do our people overnight parking where where a permit is required. We we cite them for not having a permit for parking their RV overnight, things of that nature is that we're not trying to address the expressive elements. We're just trying to address conduct that we've decided should not occur without a permit. On street vendors, we also have a permit requirement. But the law is it's a state mandated law that we've put in an enabling or we have an ordinance that is consistent with state law on street vendors. And there is a limitation, even if someone doesn't have a street vendor permit, it's it's not a there's no there's no way to have a criminal violation for that. It's only an administrative citation. So it's a little bit more difficult to deter people who don't have a permit that can get it. They can get a warning. They can get an administrative citation. But it's not a criminal violation for for the street vendors to to be out there on the sidewalk. The roving street vendors are have have a little bit more freedom of movement under the state law. And then the the stationary vendor, someone who just camps out at one spot, has more more stringent requirements. They can't block the sidewalk. They can't. They have to be far away from a corner. There's some things that they that they need to comply with. But again, it's the same general rule about administrative citations.
Thank you. And I I see city managers in our point down. So hopefully Jeff will be rejoining us. Could you, Greg, also comment on the community members interpretation of event with respect to the holiday lights and talking about some of the other elements that are brought in? She described movies and so snowmaking equipment and things like that.
Yeah, I think the the point that staff is trying to make is that you know, because of the the expressive nature of of each person's individual holiday display, it's it's a much different type of an event than a single event where you're having an entertainment or a band or something like that at one event. Because if if you decide that and you're looking at holiday light display and then someone's displaying a Christmas or holiday related movie on their on their garage door. Is that part of the display or is that an event? We we start to get into some interesting interpretation issues for that. You know, if somebody's bringing in a crane and and they and it's, you know, we we just have to look at, are they doing that appropriately? You know, that that sounds like something that's a little out of the ordinary. And it might require a separate type of a permit from from the city if it's an like an encroachment permit if they're there all day blocking the street or part of the streets, they might need an encroachment permit for that. But I I think and then the fact that they do it all all do it at once. You know, I don't know if that's legally, if there's much we can do about people getting together and doing something all at once. It just the it's the breadth and the duration of that event that has led us to the recommendations that that we've made.
Thank you. All right. And and then Stephen Machida, did you have any any additional things to add with respect to some of the questions asked by some of the other public comment?
So I believe in my notes, I heard that I've been wondering about understanding about the changeable message board. So in in the proposal, we did include like four changeable message boards. Our intent was really to it. It's really not a wayfinding, but it's really kind of to kind of notify people that may be wanting to use Britain that, you know, there may be delays on Britain. So use alternate routes. So that could be placed closer to Alameda Rail, closer to Alameda, not on Alameda, but closer to Alameda or near Britain. And off you're closer to Alameda, near Britain. And again, it's just to kind of let people know that, you know, expect delays on Britain. And again, to, you know, basically for through traffic, they may want to use alternate routes.
Stephen, did you want to address the permanent nature of the one way streets for Birch and Eucalyptus?
Well, sure, that that is, you know, certainly a possibility. And that that is something that, you know, from upwards perspective, that that could could occur. You know, that that is something that we probably would need to have a, you know, fairly robust conversation with the neighbors in that on both streets to see if they would support that that change in instead of a two way, a one way on their street. As well as actually receive some input from public safety, post police and fire, just trying to ensure that they're they would be comfortable with that change, assuming that would be moved forward. That that's when we probably wanted or that's when I would want to take this this item back to council or kind of approval, if you will.
Okay, thank you. All right. Why don't we move to council comment and discussion? Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I had a question, actually, that was brought up by Ms. Elks. But could staff just give a little bit more information about making potentially making this a pedestrian only event? Could we dive a little deeper into the pros and cons that you weighed in in that suggestion?
I don't know if that would be Jeff or Tara or Stephen?
I think it probably would be Jeff if he's able to to answer or Stephen. I mean, certainly, we looked at everything that had been brought up. And Jeff, did you want to go ahead and comment on that?
Yeah, I think, excuse me, in in our conversations, I think the the hardest thing to get around is wherever you put the perimeter for the event where you're not letting people in, that's where you're going to create some real bottlenecks from traffic wise because you still have, we still have to check residents in to the areas or otherwise.
I'm just saying, a pedestrian only event, not not community member, not resident only, pedestrian only, so closing the street completely.
Closing the right, but the residents have to be able to get in. So it would be a matter of setting a perimeter for the residents that live inside the the pedestrian only area. And then, you know, the other thing that you're doing is is you it doesn't really address the traffic issues. The traffic is still going to be coming into the area, even if it's not coming down that particular street. So it really just had to do with the difficulty and the potential headaches for the folks that lived inside the perimeter of how we, you know, how we keep everybody except them out in terms of vehicles.
Councilmember Diggin and then Councilmember Rack?
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm just moving on to discussion now. But yeah, this was a wonderful event. It's the very best kind of community event because it just rose out of the community. We've enjoyed it for years. Fully supportive to figure this out. I certainly recognize there are real impacts on on the neighbors in in that proximity for 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 kind of a surprising radius, actually, when when you spend time down there, you realize this thing can be pretty impactful. So I'm glad we're taking it seriously. I'm glad we're really looking at it. I was a little struck by by the price tag. It does feel a little bit expensive to me. So I like the idea of the flexibility. I would like us to really lean into that, especially given, I I guess it has been pleased to some extent on the weekends. I don't notice that because I already know better than to go there on the weekends. I usually take my family through there midweek. And so I would like us to really lean into the flexible nature and ramp that up as needed if if we feel it's needed. The I like the idea of limiting the 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 timing of the lights and the dates of the lights around Christmas time. If that is possible, I do think the neighborhood owes us some organization and leadership back. You know, we are working hard as a city to to try to preserve this and make this a great event. And and I do think the neighborhood should should be expected to meet us on that. And and I think things like limiting the dates and the hours are very reasonable. So hopefully those discussions can be had. I'm very supportive of that. That seems very reasonable. I think Councilmember Rack is right on about parking. If there's anything we can do to organize parking, channel it or otherwise take some of that pressure off the area street. So we should definitely be doing that. And I certainly support the permitting and and wonder if we shouldn't also require some form of permit at Christmas time. I I recognize the insurance application. So I'm not quite sure why we would only do that for for Halloween. And otherwise, fully supported. I'm glad we're leaning into this and I hope we can figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I appreciate all the comments and questions for all this. A couple of thoughts, just I wanted to share one. I guess I'm open. There was some question Tara mentioned about the security guards, about whether that's a necessary expense. And I guess I'm sort of flexible on that. If we're if if part of the complaints are around traffic, I mean, excuse me, around you know, trash and things related that may be solved with the porta potties and the trash bins, we really need those extra security guards. And that expense might be one I'd be willing to sort of examine and maybe take off and from a cost standpoint. The other one is, I guess, I I'd be more interested. I'm a little concerned about us committing sort of two years worth of appropriations for this when we don't know how this plan is going to play out. So I'd be more comfortable saying, let's do this for year one. And then get some report, understand what worked, what didn't work, and then come back with a plan for year two versus just trying to say, we're going to spend $110,000 each year without kind of knowing the results or getting the data around that. So I would sort of offer that suggestion as well. And then on the dates, I I'm a little, while I think it's a good idea to try to, you know, make some changes around the dates, I'm a little concerned about asking people from the city's perspective to be telling people when to have holiday lights up and down. I'm I'm a little concerned of you know, I can go put my lights up, but you can't. We don't want you to put your lights up. And I I think that sort of sets a bad precedent for us to be doing. I understand some of it's coming from the community, but I I'm a little concerned that sort of taking that prescriptive approach for that. And then lastly, I I well, I think there's many things in the plan that hit the mark. I I really feel strongly that we missed the mark on the parking. I I think we we just we're not tackling the biggest issue that is there, and that is the the traffic and the amount of people and trying to we we've talked about, you know, our our pedestrian master plan and bike pedestrian master plan to try to make ourselves a more pedestrian friendly city to promote walking, but yet we don't address that at all in this plan. We don't. There's, I mean, I as we were talking and hearing like, there's Britton Acres and St. Charles. There's there is there and we could just put signs up, right? We don't need to have, doesn't have to be a huge expense to put some, say, this is the way you walk to go to the holiday lights. And to me, by not doing that outreach, we're really missing the mark and doing it justice to the neighbors who live on the streets outside of Eucalyptus. We're not thinking about them and the needs and the impacts they have without trying to reduce the traffic. And I think we've really done a disservice around that piece of the plan. But and I would encourage us to to ask the staff to go back. around that piece of the plan. But and I would encourage us to to ask the staff to go back and do that request and try to come up with some solutions around that for this year and moving forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I too want to thank the community for their input. This issue is something that the mayor and I had a number of conversations about last December in response to a significant amount of feedback from our residents. And I think holding the two community meetings was really valuable to understand the scope of the impact of this community celebration. I'm sure, like everyone, you know, our family values this holiday tradition, too. It's something that makes our community very special, and I think that that's not lost on any of us. But this event has grown just massively in recent years, such that public safety concerns, I feel like have really hit a tipping point, and the city does need to have a more robust plan. As you know, public safety is one of our top concerns as a city and as a council, so I do support increasing our staffing and adding the extra trash cans and restroom facilities. But I also think that it's really important to point out to the public the figure of 110,000 as an annual expense. San Carlos is a small town with a limited budget. For example, at the beginning of the pandemic, we gave $112,000 in rental assistance to those who couldn't afford to pay their rent. We gave $112,000 in grants to help our small businesses. We gave $70,000 in assistance for food distributions. So when we make these spending decisions, we know that we have to make hard choices. And when we spend $100,000 in one place, that means we can't find something in another place. So I think it's just really important for the community to understand that there are trade offs here. With that being said, I do support allocating funding. I think this is an important public safety issue to address. I also, like John said, I agree that this requires some kind of compromise with the Eucalyptus residents to voluntarily try and dial back some of their displays or hours or days. I just think that we really need to work on alleviating the impact of this event on the community as a whole. The spillover on the surrounding streets cannot be ignored. This is something we need to recognize and then work together to mitigate. I appreciate Adam's point about parking. I do think that we really need to think about opening up our parking capacity to try and alleviate those bottlenecks and encourage people to walk. The porta potties seem to be one of the cheapest things in this plan. So if it means we need to put a couple more out at two other parking lots, I would be okay with that. I really think that we need to think about how we're going to alleviate the impact. And like Adam said, I also agree, I'd like to review this program in January of 2022 to decide if it should be continued the following year. And I think that it's important to kind of go over our learnings from this December and then think about what we need to do going forward. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Once again, I want to thank the staff for their work on it and the public for their input. The emails we got, a lot of good things to to think about. You know, this this event or whatever it is that you want to call it, this this annual phenomenon that we've created is I think it's become a victim of its own success. You know, started out as a pretty cool thing and and it's still a very cool thing for a lot of people, but you know, everybody has pretty much hit the nail on the head. The main thing is is the parking, but traffic is just so oppressive during during the series of nights when when the event, when the events are on or the street is is open for for people. I have some problems, though, with the idea of making it a pedestrian only event. I think you've got, you may have some issues with with the disabled, with elderly, with people with other mobility issues that really may have no other way of visiting the street without without being in a car. The other concern I have is with the parking. Well, I think that's generally a good idea. I have a little, I, it concerns me that now the city is getting involved with sanctioning an official parking area. Think about that larger parking area at along a Royal, a Royal School. If you make that a designated parking area, now people know, gosh, there's lots of more places to park. And I can imagine the traffic trying to get in and out of there every night, trying to, you know, find a place to park. I think that lot would fill up very quickly. Britton Acres has no real, you know, large supply of parking, neither does St. Charles. I think, I don't know what St. Charles agreement is with the city. And they also have their own events going on. So so those things really concern me. And I also believe that, you know, last year, as I think our city manager said, that the whole COVID situation made this thing worse. So I I generally agree with everything staff's proposing. I like the fact that I like the idea really of limiting the hours, limiting the access, the the one way traffic control. I think that's good. I agree with Adam that maybe we ought to make this a one year commitment. At least for the time, I'd like to see how it goes and then we can make a we can make a decision. But we really need, you know, we really need to think about this in the long term. I think everything we're looking at is really just a moderating effect on what has become something that impacts way more than the people on on Eucalyptus and Birch and Orange and 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 Tamarack, you know, as one resident wrote who lives on Cedars, you can't get in and out of a driveway. Then it impacts people on, I think, as far away as Alma and and Howard and Greenwood. So whatever we can do to to make it a little bit easier, I'm in favor of. But I I think we really ought to be careful with how far we go in in providing this parking and limiting the access only to to pedestrians. I just think that's gonna, that could create more problems than it might solve. So those are my comments.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Collins. Appreciate the discussion. From my perspective, we here's another element of San Carlos that's been discovered. And, you know, the the demand has really outgrown the capacity and infrastructure to support it, right? So when I think of you know, other communities where they can manage large crowds coming into their community, you know, they have the wider streets, right? They have the venue at which the event is held. They have the adjacent parking for car storage and the like. And, you know, I live probably about a half a mile from that particular street and I can, you know, attest to the fact that over the last several years, there are now people parking on my street. And each year, it's, you know, one block closer, one block closer, and and now it's where we are. I I think the staff has presented options that are practical and well within our our scope as a city. Again, I don't envision, well, let me, let me start with this. I heard loud and clear that the community really enjoys these events and they want to support them and they want the city to help support them. And they're they're willing to allow us to allocate funds to do so. At the same time, I also share councilmember Collins' concern that we're not an event management company. We run the business of protecting the public safety and and our job is to ensure that everyone is able to have a restful and peaceful evening. And so to that end, I am in favor of opening up the dialogue with the community members who put on this this event or display of lights, I call it what you will, and ask, you know, require a permit for the Halloween. I'm also in favor of having the discussion around asking them if they would be willing to shorten the duration of the event, the days of the week and hours of operation, because again, it's a demand and capacity issue that we're facing with right now. And I share your concern, Councilmember Collins, that if we were to find, you know, adjacent parking and open that up, we're just expanding, I think, the the problem. And we can't get away from the fact that we've also been asked not to promote the event, which the city hasn't done, but the word has gotten out. And how do you effectively communicate with people where they can park and how to get to the event? You then by virtue of that, start to advertise the event and then more people will know about it. I appreciate the sentiments with respect to the one way streets and making that a more permanent fixture for the duration of of the holiday lights. And I understand with a permit for the Halloween, that would allow the closure of the street. I appreciate the interest in bringing in lights, because I know that there are some dark corners and in that area, and people have expressed concern about the safety of pedestrians and small children with the cars that are going through there. I'm aligned with the idea of being flexible with the the security. That being said, I do know that many community members feel that there isn't enough. So I'd like us to remain open about that. Bringing in trash receptacles and restrooms was something that I think is needed. Again, it's a, that that harkens to a safety issue, a health issue. And I do appreciate councilmember Rack's proposal on committing one year to this and then assessing and seeing how it goes. So those are, those are my perspectives at this time. Councilmember Rack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate all the comments from everyone. I just wanted to, I know, because we're sort of getting to the point where looking for, I'm soon looking for a motion, just so I understand kind of where take a poll of where everyone is on some of these, a couple of things. I know the security issue and and it sounds, it sounds like for the one year versus two, there's enough people, but I'm unclear on the parking because I've heard from, I don't think John's weighed in on that. So I just want to understand kind of what there is. And I would just suggest on the parking, if I could quickly, would if you or if you or councilmember Collins would be open to at least asking this, asking the staff to, one, try to look at ways to promote more walking versus driving and potentially at least reach out to the school district to see if there's any interest. And and they can come back and say, no, or this isn't a good idea. But I feel like we haven't done our due diligence around this one piece. So just not committing to it, but asking that we at least take a look at it and they can definitely come back and say, this is not possible.
I just thought I'd mention that we'd be happy to reach out to the school district as well as St. Charles and see if those are options. Just a concern would be what the expectations will be for having parking by the public on these school sites in the evening and what the, what cleanup and what they might require of us. So just, we just need to be aware that they might have some expectations and also depending upon how far they are from the location, if we need to have facilities and things at multiple parking lots. I just wanted to bring that up. We'd have to come back with some more costs for you.
Thank you. Councilmember Diggin and then councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, I certainly support figuring out parking. I appreciate Adam's concern around that. That is one of the the major impacts. I guess, you know, I I would be willing to fix our budget as proposed and delegate to staff and they figure out parking. I'm not very interested in expanding this budget even further. I already think it is a pretty rich budget. I appreciated Sarah's perspective on how this measured up against some of the direct support that we provided our community, you know, in a very significant crisis. So this this is pretty rich in support of a, you know, a neighborhood event. I'm willing to support it. I think it is a good idea. I also support just doing it for one year. And then we can measure and adjust from there. I do support this full budget, but I would want it to include parking and I'd want us to really think about being flexible where we can be and hopefully deliver this under budget. Thank you.
Councilmember Collins?
Well, I was about to say that I agreed with everything John said, except when he said the part about parking. So because I'm unsure about that. And my question really at this point is for our city attorney. What are, what are the liability issues, if any, with involving, you know, the school district and St. Charles, either to them or to us? If we start, you know, reaching out to them to provide parking for what is a I wouldn't really call it a community event. It's really just a, you know, a neighborhood display. So I'd really be curious to know what what your feeling is on that, Greg. Is this any, what sort of exposure does this give for us or anybody else?
I think the main issue I see with entering into an agreement with the district or St. Charles Church is that they will both want to have an MOU or an agreement, and those agreements will have indemnity provisions in them as they should, because we're the ones requesting to use their parking lots or their or their property for for the event. So I'd see that's where and so that, what that means is the risk of any incidents that happen in those parking areas and the, and there's, I mean, I can think of a lot of things that we don't need to go into tonight, but to the extent that there is risk, that risk would be allocated to the city, whatever happens in those parking lots during the event. It wouldn't matter that whether it was related to the event or not, it could be, you know, something happening. It's just during the time that we're using it, it's it's going to become our our issue.
Thank you. Yeah, I, that was, that was one of my concerns, and I'd be interested to know how, you know, what the reaction is of my my colleagues to that, to Greg's comments. If there are any other suggestions, maybe we ought to think about.
Jeff, I see you brought your video on. Do you want to respond?
I did. I was just going to kind of respond to councilmember Rack's request because I don't think there's anything wrong or prohibitive with us beginning that conversation with St. Charles and the school district. They may say no. Or they may, you know, I'm like Greg pointed out, I'm sure indemnity will be an issue for them and and we have insurance. So I mean, it would just be like during that, the during the times we were using the lots, they would function like a city facility or any city parking lot that we owned. You know, so we can have those conversations and bring whatever issues come out of those conversations back to you for decisions. I also think and maybe this, you know, this probably won't be good news for you, John, but I think you'll have to look at an actual, an additional expenditure, because I think we're going to need like parking attendants, like, you know, when we rejiggered the parking downtown while Wheeler Plaza was under construction. Because, you know, there could be times when the lots become full and, you know, so they'll need to be open and closed. They'll need to be a circulation pattern within the lots so that you don't have vehicle conflicts, you know, one person going one way into the parking lot, another person going the opposite way and sort of tying up the parking lot and backing up onto the streets. So it's all doable and achievable. But it begins just by having a very simple conversation with the with the school district and the school, just to see if it's even an option. And then from there, you know, we can put together a plan on how that would work and and bring it back to you and and you guys could decide specifically on that that issue one way or the other, in terms of how you'd like it to work, if it's if it's feasible, or if there's partners willing to let us use their property.
Thank you, Jeff. So and Councilmember Rack, you asked this question earlier. So my understanding is that there's an interest in staff having us take action on these program elements tonight so that they can meet the deadline to start to address the October Halloween holiday. I would be open to kind of exploring the implications of the parking situation. I appreciate your sentiment that you feel that maybe that wasn't as well studied as some of the other items that came forward. So perhaps we could reach a compromise on that particular item for the, in the interest of trying to take some action sooner than later to make sure that we can try to minimize the impacts of of what we're experiencing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be, I'd be certainly comfortable with that. If we could maybe just in the motion, direct staff to do some research and outreach into what what the opportunities are around parking. I'd be comfortable with something along, something along those lines and to report back to us.
All right. Thank you. All right. So are we at the point, I'm hoping, where someone would be willing to forward a motion for this item?
Well, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. And with the, I'm basically going to make the motion, but I think with the addition that staff reach out to the school and the church to find out what their that staff reach out to the school and the church to find out what their receptiveness may be to providing additional parking. I'm not quite sure how I should put that in the form of a motion.
I'm happy to do that, Ron, if you'd rather not do it.
Well, if you've got some language around that, Adam, and you'd like to do it, I absolutely defer to you.
I've got some language I'll do on the fly if you want, but prepare.
Go for it. It was your idea, so.
All right. Let me, let me give it a shot here then. I move to adopt Resolution 2021 dash?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Carlos. One hundred ten thousand five hundred fifty dollars from the general fund unassigned fund balance for fiscal year twenty-one dash twenty-two to implement actions to address issues impacting the community from the Eucalyptus Avenue holiday celebrations and direct staff to explore potential for parking opportunities with entities including the school district and St. Charles. I'll leave it at that. And report back to us with, with their findings. Greg, that works for you?
That works for me. That's a very good motion.
Do you have a second?
Oh, go ahead. Ron got it.
All right, Crystal, can you, any further discussions? Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Madam Chair, Madam Mayor, I just want to say I appreciate all the work on this and for staff and, you know, this is a great event for our community and I'm happy to be supporting this and continue to look how we can improve, improve on it over time. So thank you to everyone who engaged.
All right, Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Hey, Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, the next item is new business item nine B. However, I propose a ten-minute break. Are there any objections?
We move with that.
Okay, all right. See you at nine eighteen. It looks like we have a quorum. So this next item is item nine B, the solid waste discount rate. Stephen Machida, Public Work Structure, will be making a presentation. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. So, Crystal, could you advance the slides, please? So, the study session conducted on March twenty-third related to the solid waste reduction program, actually, staff received direction from council to bring back an action item to increase the solid waste rate discount from the current level of ten percent to twenty percent. So just some, so just for some history, we currently have one hundred twenty-two households currently participating in the program. And what we're actually seeing is an average growth of about fifteen households per year participating in the program. So tonight, we're asking for some additional, or actually, we're not really asking for additional funding, but we're going to really kind of go over what, going from the ten percent level to the twenty percent, what it really means. But no fiscal impacts or appropriation are being asked for as the fiscal year budget twenty-one twenty-three operating budget actually includes sufficient funding to cover the requests. Next slide, please. So the program has and continues to be advertised in the college billing inserts, the billing messages, social media and on the city's website. In order for residents to participate in the solid waste production program, applicants must actually submit an approved PG&E cares program application, which they also offer a twenty percent reduction in electric rates to low-income households. Next slide, please. So this table actually depicts, you know, the entire budget, or excuse me, the, the expected program cost for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three with a twenty percent discount. The highlight areas, as noted below in the footnote, is the numbers are shaded and these are what the expected program costs in the respective years. So as I mentioned earlier, the current year, we have one hundred twenty-two households and we anticipate with the twenty percent reduction as our discount plus the six percent solid waste rate increase, the budget for this program, to fund the program, we just little over eighty-one hundred dollars. For twenty-twenty-two, again, assuming we add another fifteen new households to the one hundred twenty-two, we get one hundred thirty-seven household for twenty-twenty-two with a twenty percent discount plus the six percent increase for the solid waste, we have a little over ninety-six hundred dollars. And then for twenty-twenty-three, again, assuming that a fifteen, fifteen new applicants requesting participation, we would have one hundred fifty-two households. And that budget, or excuse me, that cost for the program would exceed a little over eleven thousand, eleven thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars. So this is, so currently what we're asking for council is for both candidate years twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, basically, the program cost would be about eleven thousand dollars. And for twenty-twenty-three, it'd be eleven thousand dollars five hundred. That concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any member, any members of council who wish to ask a question? All right, Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make comments?
I do not see any hands raised, so no.
Okay, at this time, we can move to discussion. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just want to say I fully support this. I think it's a good idea. We just voted a couple of months ago to raise our, our, our rates by six percent a year for each of the next three years. I did not support that, so I certainly support helping those who might need assistance in this, and I think twenty percent is much more meaningful than ten percent, especially with the impending rate increases. So I firmly support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rack, and then we'll go to Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too support this and I, I think the, you know, matching the PG&E cares program is a nice way to do this. It doesn't require us to have any additional staff time or use to do this since people already have to qualify for the cares program. And so for this small incremental cost, I think it's a good way to help those families, excuse me, most in need in our community.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too will be voting in favor of this. I think this is a great way to continue to help the community. I believe Councilmember Rack brought this forward and I wanted to say thank you again to him for that, and I'm looking forward to giving this extra assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Carlos increasing the solid waste rate reduction program discount from ten percent to twenty percent for qualifying low-income households.
Second?
Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
And Mayor Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
So that moves us on to item ten A, reports to City Council. We'll receive a report by the city attorney concerning the use of the city seal in response to the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. At the last regularly scheduled meeting on August twenty-third, a member of the public asked a question about the use of the city seal by Mayor Palmer Lohan that was printed in a, in an ad, a program ad honoring the retirement of the Labor Community Services Director at an event on August thirteenth. He also wanted to know when the city council had authorized the use of the city seal for the, by the, by the mayor. This is essentially a novel question that I have not seen before. You know, if I've been the city attorney for thirteen years and I've never seen a request to use the city seal, come to the council. So I took a look at our city code, the relevant government code sections regarding use of public resources, advice letters from the Fair Political Practices Commission and some, some treatises on the use of city seals and logos that other cities have regulated differently than we do. The program itself is pretty, the advertisement that, which I saw, it was, it's pretty simple. It said, congratulations, Reina, who is the person who is retiring, and thank you to our brothers, sisters and siblings. And then it had, under that, it had Mayor Laura Palmer Lohan, City of St. Carlos. It didn't say City of St. Carlos, excuse me, next to her name because of, I understand, because of space limitations, the city seal was placed there. But on the advertisement, also included a picture of the retiring person, I don't know if it was in the ad or it was on the same page, and there was also other logos from, from the labor unions and affiliates. So I, when I looked at what other cities have done, you know, there are more robust regulations of this, of the use of the city seal and city logos and, and intellectual property, if you will, that identifies the city. But we don't have that type of regulation in St. Carlos. We have in our section one point oh eight of the code, some very limited provisions relating to the city seal, let's say, one, it's the design of the city seal is described in the code. Two, it says that the city clerk is the custodian of the impression of the seal, not the seal itself, but the impression of the seal. And then also requires that city vehicles have images of the city seal on city vehicles unless the chief of police authorizes an unmarked car. So that's the extent of the code regulation of the use of the city seal. Now, by implication, I also looked at the city's code of conduct because this code of conduct allows council members to use city letterhead, which has the city seal on it for uses of recognizing achievements and to, and to identify their status as a mayor or as councilman. And this, that portion of the policy is suggestive and not mandatory. So what, what that means is in the code of conduct, it says that the council members should only use it for these purposes that specify, but doesn't limit it to only those purposes, is my interpretation of the code. So because we don't have any regulation of that, I'm interpreting the way the code of conduct works with the, with the municipal code on the use of the city seal and also the past practices of the city. You know, for example, the municipal code talks about using the city seal on vehicles, but all of the city officials' business cards have the logo. So code, obviously, for years, we've been using the city's logo or seal on our business cards and in email communication on the website, all those things are not mentioned. So they're, they're obviously, we're, we're using the seal in more ways than just specified in the municipal code. So finally, I, I took, I did ask the, the mayor about, about the ad and she confirmed that to me that, you know, there were no public resources used for the ad or public funds used for generating the ad. It was, it was funds that she had, she had used for that purpose. So I think, in my opinion, the, the city code of conduct, combined with the code, contemplates use of the city seal by public officials like the mayor and council members through both past practice and the, and the, the authorization in the code of conduct to use the city's letterhead, which has, which is distinguished from other letterhead by having the city seal on it. And so I think that together, when you look at that, we don't have a violation of the code of conduct, and I think the, the action by the mayor in, including the logo as shorthand for affiliation with the City of St. Carlos, I think is consistent with the policy. And, and then also, I don't think that any specific council action is required under the present code and policies. You know, after my research, I mean, it, it could be that the council might direct us to tighten this up or be more specific about these issues, but the way our code is worded, it kind of allows for, and, and the past practices along with the code of conduct, I think it, it allows council members to use it for the purpose that it was used here, which was to recognize a member of the community. So that, that's my opinion on, on the subject matter. I'm able to answer any questions, other council members or the mayor.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions for, for the city attorney? Councilmember Rack?
Madam Mayor, I, I appreciate the, the research done on this and, and I mean, I think if the, it sounds like there's nothing to pursue further, which I think is, is good to hear. And I'm just wondering if it makes sense to have some clarification, you know, if we, if we, it's something we want to, you know, review at some point because, you know, we, I think making things as black and white as possible is great and we don't have to get in a situation where you have to spend time reviewing this when we sort of know the result.
Yeah, certainly, the next time you look at the code of conduct, it could be clarified there, or we could look at the municipal code and talk about it at that, in that way. But I mean, obviously, the code of conduct is essentially a resolution. It's, it's easier for, for the council to, to craft a regulation you think is reasonable.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, Crystal, we can go to public comment.
And I don't see any hands raised for this item.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Dugan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll just say that, you know, I'm glad there was no technical issue violation or anything here, so, so that's great. And I would just suggest, since I guess it might be more a matter of perception, that I don't feel the need for, you know, more regulation or going black and white with this, but maybe we could just agree as colleagues to, you know, simply ask permission of the group at a meeting before we, we do something, you know, of broad public use of, of the city logo. That would just be my, my preference as opposed to seeking for the regulation on this.
Thank you. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I have a follow-up question for Greg. When does, how often does the council review the code of conduct? Because I feel like we can make an agreement here tonight, but unfortunately, we all turn over at some point, so I think that it is better to probably have something in writing at some point, but I'm wondering, you know, how often the city council reviews the code of conduct?
Well, Crystal might know it more specifically than I, but it seems to me like every few years we look at it. And that's an opportunity to, to clarify issues that may have come up as well as comply with the, some state law changes that come up from time to time that, that are relevant to council behavior, if you will. So I, you know, we, I think it's probably been a few years, Crystal, if I'm correct, since the last time we looked at it, so that might be a direction we could head. You're not making any decisions tonight anyway, it's just, but you can give us direction to bring something back to you if you want.
I guess I wouldn't mind adding that to the to-do list when the, when the code of conduct comes back. I think that there's several modern daytime things that we talked about in our retreats and, and this is another one that maybe we could just use some updating in our code of conduct. That would probably be my preference.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Dugan? Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Dugan?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I was just going to say, you know, we certainly can look at revising our code of conduct when, when it would normally come around in due course. I don't think there's anything about this incident that would cause me to want to accelerate that or move anything up or think about anything sooner. So that's where I'm at on this.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Rack and Councilmember Collins?
Oh, I, I think, you know, adding this to the list of things that we take a look at is, I think, a good idea. And I don't know that, you know, it has to, to, something we do next week, I think it's, but sort of adding it to the list of our agenda items, I think, is, would be a good thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Yeah, I, I agree with John. I don't think there's really anything to do here. When we look at the code of conduct again, we can talk about it then. And I, I believe, by the way, that I was a member of the Subcommittee on the Code of Conduct, and I will happily relinquish my position to Sarah and/or John. So.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any further discussion on this. So Greg, do you have what you need on this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your work on this. I really appreciate it. So that brings us to agenda setting. I'm not seeing any hands up, so we'll move to adjournment. So we're going to be adjourning the meeting tonight in memory of former San Carlos mayor and councilmember John G. Buchanan. Former Mayor Buchanan served for nine and a half years on the council. He was first elected in March of nineteen seventy-eight and re-elected again in April of nineteen eighty-two. He served as mayor from April nineteen seventy-nine through April nineteen eighty, and then again from nineteen eighty-four through November of nineteen eighty-five. May his memory be with us all, and, and our thoughts, my thoughts are, are with his family. Councilmember Dugan and Councilmember Rack?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, just a personal note for me on John. So John happens to have been my next-door neighbor up here on Chilton Avenue and just a fantastic gentleman. Just share a bit of his history. I mean, just such an American story. You know, a high school champ, state champion swimmer, went on to the Naval Academy. I think he was a captain of the Naval Academy swim team, set some records there. Married his high school sweetheart, Connie, just after graduation. Became a naval aviator, war hero, dozens of combat missions over Vietnam. Became a flight instructor in the Navy, a top gun. Came home, a successful businessman in San Carlos. Ten years on council, as you mentioned, twice mayor, I believe. And just, you know, fantastic husband and obviously a great dad from, you know, we were neighbors for fifteen years. Just a tremendous warm family. Remember, when I first moved into Chilton Avenue two thousand and four, he was sharing stories about things that had gone on in the city and all his involvements. And I'll say, that was an early kernel of inspiration for me to want to get more involved. And, you know, we chatted about things from time to time. So I owe a lot to John and just a great American. And I enjoyed reminiscing a bit with, with Councilmember Collins. Ron and I were chatting, and I guess John was an early inspiration for Ron back in the day as well. So John clearly has had a broad, deep impact on San Carlos, and he'll be devious.
Thank you. Any further comments from council?
Oh, I took my hand down. Sorry, because I called on me earlier.
All right. Councilmember Rack?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to also just extend my condolences to the Buchanan family. And I know, I think I saw on the participant list that his daughter Sarah was on the, was on the call. So, you know, I had an opportunity to spend some time with John and to learn really about the history of the city and some of the work that he did around when the high school was closed down and kind of how creating sort of the park and some of the work that was done. And he's, I emailed Sarah and asked her, like, what other things you want to talk about the community with what her dad had done. And it really, he's, you know, he's done so much, he couldn't sort of name one thing or the other. It was just that he loved this community, loved spending his time in it and helping to better it. And we're certainly thankful for all his work, and he'll be missed. And I extend my condolences again to the Buchanan family.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you. Yeah, I just also want to extend my condolences to the family and thank them for John especially for his mentorship and his support. Ten years ago, when I was first running for the council, it meant a lot to me at the time, and I really admired his service on the council. And I'm sorry that he's gone.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for the meeting, everyone, this evening, and we'll see you next time round.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thanks.